Everybody get a chance to look at it? Are there any additions, changes?
Well, I don't understand what we were attempting to say.
Page three.
Page three at the top, three zones, light, heavy, and extractive are defined in the definitions, but they're not shown on the zoning map. And this is the sentence. It is not clear when the manufacturer was removed from the maps. And you believe?
I believe the variable, three, light, heavy, and extractive.
I think we were talking not so much of the map, but the code itself, I mean, the reference to it, as well as it was called industrial versus residential.
Well, I think, which is, yeah, to clarify.
Go ahead.
Remembering the last meeting. It was, we have these three different definitions. Was it ever on the map?
Yeah, that's the question right there.
Like, did it ever show a light, or a heavy, or an extractive?
We don't know yet.
Right.
As far as I know, we never found one. But I've never seen it on the map.
I have not.
Yeah. So I know the delineation of a zoning map was never reflected with the three levels of industrial.
Right. I think he captured it. Do you think that's right, Nancy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was the interpretation I had when I read this. Not that we pulled all the manufacturing off the map, but rather that we never saw a map. As far as I know, we never had a map that said light and industrial, extractive, industrial.
So should that be the reply, move to amend him to say that?
I'll move to amend that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Passage to the minister.
Okay, we still have to...
See, I should do an abstention since I wasn't there for that discussion.
Okay, yeah. Now accepting the minutes, I guess? Now that we've amended it? Is that how we do it?
Is there anything else to...
I move we accept the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention?
Okay.
Cases before the planning commission today, number fourteen dash zero nine, Matt Geiser, University Estates, Lot 11, lot split. Mr. Geiser, you want to come up and...
I'll do it again.
Sure. Just if you would, state your name and address.
Matt Geiser, from Albany, Ohio. You need my physical address?
Uh, no, that's... We need a physical address on that one? No, that's fine. Could you just give us a rundown, then, of what you would like to do?
Yeah, basically, do you guys have the application, the survey there in front of you? Lot number 11, University Estates, is approximately five acres. We'd like to split that almost in half. You can see there, two parcels, one being 2.537 acres, and one being 2.335 acres. This would be the first lot, as you pull into University Estates on the left-hand side, that front, very front piece. So the front of this is on 682, well, there's actually a little bit of a buffer, there's some open space there that Citizens Independent Bank Corp. has between the highway and the property. And the rest of it all fronts University Estates Boulevard. And it's just basically a split almost in half, with, I think, everything conforms to the lot split requirements with the depth ratios. You can, you see the engineering there in front of you. And that's, we're proposing to split it.
And this is B3?
It is B3, yes. Both parcels will remain so, and we're not asking for any change of any coding, code, or zoning.
And it looks like the lot that was, the splitting was actually taking off the second lot, the one further back from 682, calling the other one residual. So really, it was just cutting out, making, drawing a circle for the new lot, so to speak? The 2.335 acre one?
Say that again, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Couple things. One is that it looks like you really, you did split it, but the mechanism of splitting was actually taking off the back lot rather than actually surveying the front lot. Is that the way you look for it? Go ahead.
University Estates is kind of running north-south, right?
Yes.
So it'd be perpendicular to that. If you're talking about the back lot, you're talking about the cul-de-sac.
I'm talking about the northernmost lot, northeastmost lot. That's how they, if I'm reading their survey right now, that's what they surveyed off. They...
Right.
They closed the circle on that particular side, but not the other side.
Well, but that's the residual.
Yes, okay. So we're doing it by subtraction?
Yes, yeah.
And I see there's...
Yes.
Okay, and I see there's a egress easement there. I thought that was...
That's strict...
Is that flatted?
What's that?
That's an easement for the Altamont subdivision of the top of the hill?
No, no. That is strictly an easement for this property.
Oh, okay. Oh, access to it.
Just, yes. The assumption is that there be three, there'll be some businesses in there, and so that would be just basically a common access for both parcels.
Okay. So in case it gets developed towards the back end, you just have some way to get in?
Right, right. It's not for any future splits or anything like that, just strictly for, just access between the two parcels. There'll be, there'll be a road probably that goes up through there.
I thought I heard you say three. Did I hear you say three?
Three.
Are there planned for an additional division of the property that is presented today?
No, no.
And how will they, how, is this your proposed access, then? Split right down the middle, off of University Estates Boulevard?
University Estates Boulevard fronts that whole piece. There's currently a cut-through and a curb cut that accesses this property.
Where is that located?
At the...
Where it says point of beginning.
Yeah, where it says point of beginning.
Okay.
So that would provide access for the 2.335, is where, that's where you plan on the access?
There's access there now, yeah. There's a curb cut there, there's a cut-through in the median, and, yeah, I mean, that's, if you want to drive out there today, you could pull your car right onto that property with the curb cut that's existing, yes.
Okay.
Now, there's a median out on University Estates Boulevard?
Yes.
So that's kind of going to prohibit, or, you know, reevaluate circulation? People have to go up and turn around and come back in?
No, currently, they go up, they turn left through the existing cut-through in the median, and would pull right onto the property with the curb cut. The curb cut is lined up with, the existing curb cut is lined up with, through there. Are you asking, which parcel are you asking about?
Right now, 2.335.
Yeah.
I should have done an aerial of this. What it is right now, it's all one parcel that has a curb cut, and where it says point of beginning, coming in, it's in line with the curb cut, it's in the median already. What they're proposing is to have an easement down the center between the two properties, if they ever wish to move that curb cut, so that it would be down between the two lots and have split access going to either property, if they ever wanted to do that. In order to access that, then, they would either have to go up, do a U-turn, and come back into it, or eventually cut a curb cut through the median that's out through there right now, which I have discussed with Andy, and he's okay either way, so...
Yeah, and those are options. We're not proposing that at this time, but, I mean, we've gone through, we've put this in front of Andy and have talked to Andy. I didn't realize he wasn't going to be here today, but he, his opinion that we got verbally was, either way, if people go up and go do a U-turn, if that front site is ever developed, if they want to go up and do a U-turn through the existing cut-through in the median, he said that's very common and happens all over the place, is no issue. And he says if we want to go through the median, if the, you know, future person wants to go through the median and get a cut-through through the median, that's actually going to be, I mean, the city will be involved, but he said more so it'll be up to the homeowners' association at University Estates. Which is not something that I, I'm taking on right now at this point in time.
Okay. So the intent is develop the northernmost lot, or the other one? In terms of split? Are we talking about development of one or the other?
Currently, the northernmost lot with the access, the existing access on it, is the lot that would be developed first.
Okay, just wondering.
So that's a two, okay, never mind.
2.23.
Do you have the proposed use?
Medical office.
And can this be accessed from the back of Altamont?
Not currently.
I didn't...
Not unless you got a helicopter.
Or sled, or a zip...
That easement that comes down off of the, that actually is a residual thing that comes down off of where the condos are, and, I mean, the access there, it's cost prohibitive. That'll never, in my opinion...
Technically, it's there.
Is this the slipping, the slipping?
No.
No, slipping straight down.
No.
Are there any other questions, Mr. Geiser?
I move we approve the lot split.
Can I also just double check, and did you want to weigh in at all on any comments of Mr. Paskey or Mr. Loeb?
We had everything there. I mean, it meets all the requirements, and I didn't have anything, the curb at this time's not an issue to curb cut. I did speak with Andy about it as well, so I think that was the only concern that we had, was what happens there. Since he doesn't have a concern, I guess I don't either.
Okay.
To add to that, I imagine they'll have to come back in front of us for any developments that lot?
Any development will have to come back, absolutely.
Yeah, there'll be a review at the commercial, Department of Commerce level for something.
Well, depending on the size. Under 5,000 square foot, it wouldn't have to come to the planning commission.
Yeah. I suspect it would be over 5,000.
It's interesting to look at, I mean, University Estates as a whole, but we have number and size of parcels subdivided since original purchase are zero, because...
Of this, yeah, I know, if you look at it as a whole, yeah, but of this particular parcel, it's zero. But that's, I think we can look at that throughout town, every time we get a lot split. Technically, the whole subdivision's already been done many, multiple times at one time, so...
But that was in the process of a subdivision?
Right.
Yeah.
Could I ask you a question? Mr. Paskey, this butts our three district, doesn't it?
No.
No, but as you know, UE's got different zonings all over up in there. But no, this part does not. Well, across the street, yeah, across the street is the Gran Vista, where you're coming in there, so...
I was wondering about site plan review, actually.
Yeah.
Because of the proximity of residential, not that...
I have to look, see what the exceptions, when that comes through, we'll find all that out, you know? If it's a medical office, if it butts in ours, and I thought it was only if it butted in R1 or R2.
I saw that given. You said it was an exception for the size, and I was concerned, I thought maybe I'd like to... No, it would be back. I mean, 5,000 square feet, I guess, is a lot, but maybe not so much.
But technically, does it but R1 up the top of the hill? That's my only feeling as well.
No, that's B3 as well, and the, I believe that the use for the proposed site would actually conform to an R3, not that that matters, but R3, as you guys know, you're able to put medical offices in there where the patients do not typically have an overnight stay, even in R3, so I believe that the use that's going there would even conform to going into an R3.
Yeah, that's not the issue. We're just trying to decide whether it has to go through Title 41, but I can't answer that at this time, not seeing the prints or what size of the building is.
Well, that's on the planning of the project, right?
Right.
Itself, yeah. I assume the project will have to go through Title 41. That's my assumption.
Mr. Paskey, did you come up here and tell us which one it is? This jigsaw puzzle is really demanding.
You don't know that by heart, UE?
UE, my heart wouldn't be involved in this.
Right there is the...
CJ, can you get him a longer finger?
The longer finger is this.
Right, right here, right?
Yes.
So it's this?
The whole thing is B3. That's that parcel you're pointing at.
So R3 on either side, it's this one right here?
Yeah, so across the street is R3, yeah, that's it. Across the street is R3, where the apartment complex is.
This is the parcel right here. This one right there, okay.
Across the street is R3.
So then it's R3, R1 is not.
Well, the one stuff back there doesn't apply, because it doesn't abut the property, just across the street.
And you don't know about R3s?
I thought it only required if it abutted in R1 or R2. But if it's over 5,000 square foot, it won't have to come in, so we'll just worry about that when the project comes through.
This is nice to know.
Is your question in regard to the lot split, or to the project? Does this...
We don't know about the project, Mr. Geiser, so we're just interested in what might happen there, given the fact, in my opinion, that's some of the more, because I don't want to hear about it after it's all over, okay?
I believe that the influential people up there are pretty excited about this project, if you talk to them.
Well, we'll see.
But we'll see, yeah. Don't take my word.
This is Athens.
This is Athens, yeah. I will tell you that the proposed building, the proposed thing, will probably be over 5,000 square feet, most definitely, when we get to that.
And if it was more than one building, and it had to go through our PED, so...
Not in the business zone.
Not in the business zone?
Not in the business zone.
Okay, even though it butts in our zone? That's Title 41 again?
It's Title 41.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions or concerns?
We have a motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Geiser, appreciate it.
Did we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I move we approve the lot split on case 1409.
Second. I was going to do it if you hadn't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Geiser, appreciate it.
See you again soon.
Communications, Title 23 zoning code, corridor discussions, and I guess that would be meet today with Stimson Avenue.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm excited. Let's see, I've been able to talk with a few business people, business owners down on the street there, and to help me kind of inform where we're going here, I'll take my glasses off. My discussion, I guess we were supposed to maybe talk a little bit about Carpenter, just for a little bit, but basically, what I chose to do, if that's all right, was to confine myself to discussion about Stimson Avenue. The comprehensive plan describes Stimson Avenue as a three-quarter mile of road running from Stimson Avenue Bridge to the intersection of Stimson Avenue and East State Street. Zoning along Stimson has been designated as a B3. Stimson Avenue is also a link to Ohio University, largely through Palmer and Elliott Streets. The corridor itself has been well-maintained, I think, in terms of local business. Many of the businesses that are on Stimson Avenue, for instance, have had the same owner for over 10 years, which is interesting from our aspect in terms of stability and future development. The corridor itself is a mix of generally small, locally-owned businesses versus the box or corporate-owned businesses that you might see, for instance, on East State. There's also residential, excuse me, residential usage, mostly student in nature. The housing itself is either standalone homes of an older nature, or they are apartments above first-story office space. Most of the standalones, or probably all of the standalones, are no longer owner-occupied as they used to be when they were first put in. Because of this mix, Stimson Avenue possesses a small village atmosphere. Many of the businesses have owned, as I said, have been owned for 10 years or longer. They have a solid base, they have a solid core of anchor stores, such as Ambassador Laundry, Hocking Valley Bank, the post office, the pharmacy, KFC, to name a few. And then other shops that have really come in to demonstrate the viability of the street as a business corridor is also Athens Bicycle, Jackie O's, and Belavino. Also a new apartment complex on top of Belavino, the Stimson Gardens. So newer businesses are finding success, I think, to some degree because of the anchor stores that are there, because of the stability. Stimson is also regarded as a community gateway. That will be particularly emphasized as the university continues to develop the, I don't know what you would call the...
Altamont Extension.
Yeah, the street off of, that links, the linkage to Mill Street Village. And I think a number of the business owners have expressed interest in how that will develop, what part the city might play in that and anything. So that was of interest to them. The gateway aspect also brought up the idea, a couple suggestions, could Stimson Avenue actually have a designation as Stimson Village, just to emphasize what is, what we're trying to develop in there, that area. The, also the questions that came up is, how can the city work with the university in terms of developing that whole gateway? The other thing that came into play was the roundabout that has been proposed for that area. Particularly, on the easterly side of Stimson, people were interested in how that was going to play out for them in terms of traffic flow. So they had an interest in that. I wouldn't say a concern, but an interest, curiosity there. With the addition of Jackie O's, Stimson Avenue also expands the number of businesses that are open beyond 5:00, which, when we talk with, for instance, like the Chamber of Commerce, one of their concerns uptown in the past has been, they would like to see more businesses open up beyond the 5:00 conventional time to allow people who work up to that time to have availability for the stores, to be able to have access to the stores. And Stimson seems to be developing that way. I mean, you have a couple of the laundromats that obviously are open beyond the 5:00, you have the Chinese restaurant, you have the post office that you do have access to, like the postal boxes, things of that nature. The KFC would be also another store that, again, goes beyond that 5:00, as does, I think, believe, Belavino and what was, oh, I forget what it's, Carl, Mr. Edwards owns it now, the, what used to be, what used to be...
Oh, Busy Day Market.
Yeah, what used to be Busy Day, if it's still Busy Day.
I think it's still called that, yeah.
Yeah, so you have, you have a number of businesses that, you know, it's actually, I would say, on a ratio basis, there're probably a lot more businesses open beyond that 5:00 hour on Stimson than you might find on Court Street, so...
With the exception of bars.
With the exception of the bars, right. So you have a, have a real strong capability for, I'm seeing, Stimson Avenue not only being able to develop business, but to retain business. There's only probably one shop that I know of, one office space that I know of, towards about the, you know, towards East State Street, that probably has a lot of different occupants in it. Talking about like the tattoo place, which has gone through a few versions there. So I think that there's a lot of opportunity for that, as far as the community embracing Stimson Avenue a little bit more. The biggest, one of the biggest questions that came up was, what will we do with the traffic lanes? And is there something that can be done differently in the future? For instance, it was kind of mixed in terms of interest about retaining the traffic lanes and the on-street parking as it currently exists, or did they want to have some sort of median strip with some landscaping in between the traffic lanes, with bike lanes also incorporated in there? How did, how did the city want to propose a future development for that, as far as that infrastructure? There wasn't a big outcry or big interest in expanding, unlike the thoughts in the comprehensive plan, there wasn't a big desire necessarily to widen the sidewalks. They thought that the sidewalks currently, while some could stand repair, probably handled the pedestrian flow adequately, and probably thought if we're going to do any type of development in there, maybe more of the bike lanes. The bike lanes could also maybe link the rest of the Mill Street, Ohio University area through Palmer with bike lanes there. They thought that Elliott was probably a little too congested for bike lanes there, but, you know, their, their initial thought was, you know, could a bike lane, link a bike lane on Stimson with ones that you currently have on Mill Street that would lead into the university? Let's see. They would like to see maybe some cooperation, I think they, they said, between the city and the Metieris Procos property that is on the corner of Palmer and Stimson. And, you know, if there was some way that the city could talk with Mr. Procos and see how that could be developed, what type of arrangements or, you know, flexibility might be available that that could be developed in the future, because they really saw that as a potentially key site for development, future development of Stimson, as well as just the way the building looks, you know, so...
I think we have conversations going on regularly, and he has that proposal. We still have yet to see a permit for the gentleman's clothes, or whatever they're called, right? Night clothes, or, I know, okay.
Well, this led into the idea that businesses wanted to see, and I think I brought this up previously, they would like to see the code be the same for both sides of the street as far as, you know, what you could do. And, you know, could you have a drive-through for food on one side, but not on the other? And so as far as corridors, could those be, in terms of codes, be, maybe have a separate designation to where the code is uniform on both sides of the street?
The difference between one side or the other is probably driven by the proximity of residential areas. If they say, we're going to make the same on both sides, you're kind of saying, okay, we don't want to look past that particular B-zone, we don't really care what's abutting it, because it's, you know, we want to be consistent on both sides. I suspect also that we'll probably see a traffic change over time, once the linkage between South Green and Stimson occurs. In fact, I would actually anticipate that we'll probably possibly have a drop in traffic, overall traffic on Stimson.
Well, this is why they, why businesses hedged on, like, well, this is what we definitely would like to see, because they had an attitude of, we want to wait and see how this plays out, and, you know, how the, the traffic flow does eventually start to play on our street, before we, like, commit to something that we would definitely like to do in terms of the traffic lanes.
Well, when you say traffic lanes, you've been changing the configuration that exists now? I mean, take off the two-hour parking, keep the two-hour parking?
Some people talked about, you know, could there, you know, and I think there are still some stores that need some on-street parking on Stimson, but I was surprised that some businesses were open to the idea that, you know, maybe a little bit more in terms of, or I should say, a little bit less on-street parking, where you could begin to incorporate some things. I don't know that there was a big hue and cry about having more landscaping and things of that nature. I think that, for instance, Cornwell Properties and Athens Bicycle are kind of showing the rest of the street a model for, you know, how to landscape their facilities and make them more appealing that way. But some, you know, I was wondering also, as far as like when the university, or if the university does formalize that gateway, that northern gateway to the campus, you know, how they were going to treat that in terms of signage, in terms of landscaping, in terms of, you know, acknowledgement that this is the northern entrance to our campus, and could that integrate with the designation, that's the signage that you already have out there for the City of Athens like this?
Well, we do have the, we, that's one of the gateways, we have a formal signage right now. I mean, unlike something like, I don't think there's one that exists out on Union, and that's an entrance right there. And there's really not one, a formal one, at the south Y end of Richland. And there's really not one, a formal one at the south Y end of Richland. And I, I know we're working with the university, as soon as we, as soon as they, they start approaching on our right-of-way, we'll be talking to them, we've been talking to them already. I don't know the timetable for that second phase.
We're out to probably at least 2018. I mean, the plan really is to work with the university to obtain property in order to achieve a roundabout, once you come off the Stimson Avenue Bridge. The bridge is in good shape. They would like to see pedestrian improvements. They have the lease for the property on the opposite side for additional recreation. And ODOT wants to eliminate that conflict there, and that's why we have Mount Stimson there in the field for a future off-ramp. But we are some years out from that, and.
The Mill Street, so Mill Street will be done this year, so it'll take at least.
Well, and we could very well see some impacts, and I think you were sharing that with me, RJ, that they were asking, how much more increased traffic will be going through that little Mill Street access? And I can share with you, from the biking community's view, and maybe you can weigh in, Paul, the Stimson Avenue access to and, to get on and off there is not ideal in any way, shape, or form for cyclists.
You're talking about for the bike lane, bike paths?
From the bike path, I'm sorry. Although, one of my happy thoughts, I thought, was installing a bike lane on Palmer. We have a really wide right-of-way on Palmer. That should be easily accomplished, as a different connector, perhaps.
One of the difficulties with that, I, I see that people, if you widen Palmer, you'd actually get more speed on that. I see Elliott's very slow, just because the congestion, as you say, it's very narrow. You've got a line of cars there. You really don't have a line of cars on Palmer right now. I mean, except for the by Stimson area that.
I don't think there's parking on Palmer at all.
No, there isn't.
That's what I'm saying, just lay down and strike. Sometimes there's some easy solutions.
Okay, yeah, lay down and strike would do it. That doesn't mean people aren't going to drive, you know.
I've seen, I mean, I travel that street all the time, and I see bikes on it all the time. It's not a problem. I don't see it as a problem. Maybe they want the designation, but I, you know, I don't see that.
Okay.
But it's narrow. It is narrow, the part that is developed. And it's narrow enough that it's sometimes, well, you do slow down, which is what we're supposed to do.
True. I, I wonder what the trend is on, on the businesses there. I mean, as you say, a lot of them are after five, but, you know, you have the law office there, Lamborn's, that's now migrated down there, is obviously not an after-five business. And with the trading post has changed over. I think it's still a pawn shop, right? As a part of it?
It's half and then the other half.
A medical facility, supplies.
Again, I suspect those are not late-night activities either, so I wonder where the trend will be over time about, you know, later. And again, that will affect the R-zones in theory. That would be, you know, that's where the zoning comes into play. I mean, that's why the drive-in issue is always a question at that point. It's good that you talk to them, right? There's some good ideas there. I always hesitate by calling something a village, because, you know, to my mind, a village is anything under 5,000, and it's an incorporated entity itself. I mean, not that the branding of, you know, as a river village is something different, but actually to have a formal designation as a, you know, city designation, I would hesitate to say, we're going to split off Stimson and turn it into a village.
I thought that was quaint. I really liked that idea.
You could have it like the, like, what, Germantown up in Columbus, or things of that nature.
It's not that.
You just have that, that branding.
Yeah.
That just, I think, brings maybe a little bit more focus to business.
Maybe overnight they'll all get wrapped in brick. I've got two more problems, I think, that have to address on your street, and one of them is the fire department. If you're in rush minute in Athens and the fire department's going through there, it is, you're on the sidewalk, at least one lane of traffic, though, because of the, using the bypass with the fire trucks. Several times, I've been really worried about what was going on. The other thing is ATCO, which is probably more daily. There's a lot of traffic that is wheelchair traffic. There's a lot of traffic that is not well-served by the existing sidewalks, and I think that needs to be addressed, too. I won't tell council member, Patterson yet.
We did, some years back.
I know, you've done some changes.
And improvements and.
I remember the instigator of that, yes.
Actually, we've had, we've had a, obviously, the Disabilities Commission at times, about the maintenance of the sidewalks in Stimson. What was his, Andy Lushbaum, I think was one who was always, he had a portfolio of everything we've done, as well as copies of the many, many, many letters he has sent council and the city over time to, to improve the accessibility of that particular corridor.
And I guess what I think what Nancy's saying is, that's not going to decrease, or probably just increase in terms of.
But the hill is part of the problem, and you can't really excavate it.
If we wanted to make a perfectly accessible city, we ought to flatten everything.
I know. People have done that before, yes.
Yes. Actually, I think there's been talk about giving the Service Award, New Dean Award to Mr. Hayes, because he's been doing a good job.
Good.
One of the other things that surprised.
Are you kidding? I knew he was kidding.
Moving along here. But one of the other things that, that I found surprising was that the US Postal Service wasn't terribly popular down there, as much of it is.
Is it late night, or is it?
Where people park, because when their, when their lot is full, people tend to park across the street, or at Hocking Valley Bank, or over to the office space to the other side of the postal. Also, just the traffic going in and out was, I think, viewed as, you know, of concern. Because, well, first of all, if you take the ingress egress of the post office there, I see a lot of times, the tradition is to come in from the Hocking Valley Bank side to exit on the office building side.
It's one way, yeah.
But you have people who occasionally do come in from the office side and totally gum things up, so, you know, and people, the fact that.
People are that way. It backs up Stimson on left-hand turners.
Yeah.
The post office should hope they have that problem, as we go into the future.
They will.
Increased business.
It will be increased. I can't tell you why, but that's, it'll be okay.
Oh, come on. You can't come here and say to a public body.
I think that also.
You just got 20 public information requests just for saying that. You realize that?
Call the Columbus Post Office.
Okay, but, okay, I understand what you're saying. The traffic flow is real bad there.
And, and not to mention the fact that, that a number of people actually don't like to park when there's a lot of people in the post office, because, you know, as far as pulling out from the postal spaces.
They're both backing.
They would prefer to go across the street or Hocking Valley, where they think it's a safer place to park and pull out when they're done.
I don't see any solution that the city can offer on that one.
I'm just, I'm just making that observation.
No, and it's, it's, it'd be interesting to look and take our code right now, and look at the square footage of the, of the pedal stop, and says, it was probably built before the code was modified. It was probably built a certain way where it expressed a different time and place. I mean, they do have parking in the back, but that's where all their trucks and everything like that. And if you start saying, okay, so what would that look like if that turned into a Tim Hortons, where the traffic would be much diff, no, I'm saying, okay, no, really, okay, we talked about trying to improve, put businesses there, drive-throughs. Suppose we say, let's add two more drive-throughs to Stimson. What would that look like? You know, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of the, I don't think that parking lot is well-laid out, granted, because, you know, the way, you have to pull in and out, and back in and out. But at the same time, it probably reflects a different time and pace or place at that time, what was put together.
I mean, Stimson's in danger of going the same route as other corridors, which is a stop sign at every intersection. If you think back to the three-way there.
But that one is good, really, because I think the other side of it is that some of that congestion slows down the traffic, which you need to have happen. Except for the fire truck going down to the bypass, that doesn't have to happen.
I don't know if you, is there, is a lot of traffic going into the ATCO, where the gun shop is, the pawn shop, where you have the light there? I don't know if, if they're talking about maybe could that be like a flashing yellow versus, you know, red all the time?
I don't know, we'd have to go study on that. I wouldn't bet that.
I bet it went in for ATCO.
Yeah, for those buses.
Yeah.
But people do enter that from all kinds of different directions, I think, ATCO, because I've.
Yeah, there's the alley and.
Right, and by the VFW or whatever it is.
That's something we actually looking at, actually, when we talk about Stimson, that's one of the few areas, that end of Stimson does have a parallel alleyway, doesn't it? Always forget that, yeah. Behind the trading post.
It also has it on the other side, I mean, the.
The Cornwell side, the Morris side?
The Morris Avenue side has one, too, at least part of the way.
Oh, yes, it does, right. You get three years.
Some of the people thought, too, that a new fire station at the Procos site, and that's, I understand that's been bandied about on occasion, just in informal talks or just casual.
We were looking at it, with the previous chief, we were looking at it at one point, and actually, we were looking at grants for that, because there was actually some safety grants for that. But unfortunately, it's in the 100-year floodplain, which pretty much nicks those grants. If I remember, about four or five years.
I don't know that we were looking at anybody's personal, private property, I think we were looking at.
We were looking for a location at that time, yes. And actually, I think, I don't think we were plugged in on that one. We were actually thinking even further out.
Well, I was thinking, I've always talked about the idea of out across the street from Mill Street Village, where, where a fire station would have access to the bypass, it'd have easy access to connect to East State, it would get right into the campus.
Yeah, that was discussed.
The infamous NCR line.
That's even more in the floodplain, where the NCR property was, yeah.
The fire department typically, they try to avoid using the highways, though.
Yeah.
Because there's so many cars moving at such fast speed, trucks moving at fast speed, and a lot of them are not used to, they're out-of-state, out-of-town traffic. So they, they typically try to avoid getting on highways. They, they stick to the local routes as best they can.
That's home where they're having lunch.
Is there, you have more general discussion on this, or that's basically what I had to offer here?
I think it's pretty interesting. I appreciate what you came up with. I was wondering about those residential uses that go along that street. You see that as a, I see that at least, and the lots are quite deep as a potential important development area, you know, raise those houses, except they might be generating so much money, they wouldn't.
Well, I didn't really want to talk about raising, because since that was already somebody's property, you know.
No, no.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously, you know, an area of interest, I would think, for future development. And when you bring that up.
It was common ownership on a lot of those properties, if you look. The gentleman that was interested in doing that, he was, he was acquiring each one of them, so that someday he could develop that possibly.
It's not a narrow parcel, but I do think, I was going to say common ownership.
And realize, of course, anything that would be redeveloped there, the way we have the law written right now, would require a commercial first floor.
Right, and people point out, you know, as I, I don't know if I mentioned it, you know, people view the Athens Bicycle and Stimson Gardens as models for, you know, how they would like to see the street developed in the future, where you do have business on the bottom and residential on top. One person, however, brought up, how much office space do you really need in a town like this? And, you know, in terms of development, then, do you really want a lot more business on bottom, residents on top? Can, can the city actually hold that many? You know, and I didn't get a chance to talk with any realtors, I wanted to, but just to see what the demand is for, for office space, small office space in Athens. Because that would enter into it, we certainly wouldn't want to have empty storefronts, you know, and residents on the top. So, you know, how, how that might play out or develop is, is something that people think about. But, you know, as a model, just thinking casually about it, people do like the Stimson Garden idea, as far as how you were going to reconfigure residential, living there and business.
One of the issues with, as I say, Stimson Garden, of course, is that we've had split parking. We have it on Stimson, we have it on, is it Montrose behind there? I think it is, yeah. So you've got almost like a two-tier parking area. Any other, and the bike shop, of course, is really a retrofitted, you know, house. I mean, they tried keeping the same character to a certain extent. They've had to add parking behind. I think they've actually took over some of the parking of the next lot, if my memory's correct. So when you start saying, let's build a model where we have commercial on the first floor required, and then residential on the top floor, we still have to find that parking for that one-bedroom, one parking.
But they, but they did like the idea of, you know, how we can take maybe an existing structure and reconfigure it in such a way that it would fit into the, the tone of the street, as far as what they're trying to do, that, that village aspect, and still maintain a, you know, the, the business quality of it. But, you know, that's what I think what they're getting at with, like, the bicycle shop, is that, you know, they, you know, take an existing structure, they don't tear it down, but, you know, they maybe take a portion of it, or something like that, off and, and remodel it in such a way that it, it fits contemporary needs, but at the same time retains a, a small-town flavor.
Okay, in context of what we were discussing, of course, which is trying to create different flavors of B3s, because this is B3. What you're saying is that really, this would be a, the, the hybrid of a B1, B3 zone, so to speak. We could call it B2, except B2 doesn't fit the slot either. And I say that because really what you're trying to do is create the, the small-town feel, so you, in one sense, you really don't want to have to say, you have to build, you know, commercial on the bottom. And when you talk about commercial businesses, I think in the comprehensive plan, it talks about this is, the, the look there is that these would be almost a pedestrian-driven businesses. So at that point, you're going to say, okay, what businesses work or don't work for that? And from what I understand, nationally, the trend is we're overbuilding occupants' office space already.
Right.
You're right, that, the national trend's there, whether it's here or not is another matter.
I don't, I don't see, I don't know, I kind of hold there, some of the business people's opinion down there. I don't know that I see Stimson as a really emphasizing pedestrian, unless you're calling bicycles, you know, but.
Less the type of business moved in there.
That's, that's true, but, you know, I think generally that what you see is people using bicycles or automobiles to getting to Stimson.
It's not very pedestrian-friendly, though, because of the sidewalk being flush up to the street.
Right.
I think that might be part of it, but if, you know, if you look at it from density surrounding it, there's, on both north and south of Stimson, it's packed with.
There's that potential.
Very dense, dense neighborhood, actually, on both sides.
And maybe people will walk to Jackie O's.
Right.
You know, we'll find that out. I mean, they're still relatively new in that, that neighborhood. The other thing, though, I would say, like, about the Stimson Gardens, or, or Stimson in general, is that if you're talking about those houses between Elliott and Mill Street Village, wouldn't the lots be deeper than like what the Stimson Garden had to work with, when you're talking about having parking on two different levels there? It would seem to me that the, the lot sizes are deeper on that end of Stimson.
I don't, there probably are. I don't know. Again, I know there's, some of them have an alleyway behind, which limits the depth of them, but I don't know what they.
Caroline Thompson's, you know, that she built up the corner.
They'd be about as deep as KFC's lot, which I think is probably all the deeper than Stimson Garden. Its contour is the difference. You got the lots down towards KFC are flat all the way through, where up around Stimson they were slow.
On that other side.
And if you look at the, the other example, we have a, of, of small houses being turned
into business, of course, is Richland by the C and E going out towards that way. We have a series of houses that, over time, have converted to, from residential to small real estate places, I think, was it United Way is trying to sell theirs right now as a commercial. So you see, okay, and, and that, I think, is a little bit different, because it's further out of town, and that becomes more traffic-driven, car-driven, automobile-driven. This is, I think, being closer, and, and it's topography there, it's nobody, you know, I'm sure somebody walks down from Canadaway down the hill to go shopping, but probably most of them don't. This I, I look as will, will retain a lot of its pedestrian, will be pedestrian, it may not be friendly for the sidewalk situation, but I think just because of the proximity to the student housing on Stimson's side, on the Mill Street side, and the Morris side, the residents there, I think it'll always have a certain flavor to that. I, I don't know, I, I, I don't go to the busy market as much as I should, probably, but, because I, but it, it looks like it's catering to both ends of it, I think, at this point.
Well, you know, also going back to the Stimson Village designation idea, you do got to keep in mind that at one point, where the post office was and across the street, there still exists, so you, one, two, three, at least three old company homes. On Cornwell, the house that abuts that, what that's now in with the Athens Bicycle, was actually a company store. So, you know, you do have historically a kind of a, a linkage to a village concept with, with that as well.
Do you think the property owners in that area would be amenable to actually calling it a historic district? I mean, at this point, I don't think there's enough there to call it that, but, I, I, because, most people look at, oh, historic district, now you just restricted me to wearing colonial clothes for the rest of my life or something, you know? I'm sorry.
You should have been there on Tuesday. You wouldn't say.
I don't know if we need to, you know, extend that far on.
No, but, okay, well, again, what do we want to see there? And again, what kind of B3 flavor are we talking about? Because, again, I look at it as, if we're trying to talk about overlays, and we're trying to talk about what we're going to end up with, you know. to talk about what we're going to end up with, you know?
I just can say that, and I'm with Nancy, that we have to protect, you know, both neighborhoods, but in particular, you have what a significant owner occupies just on the back of the north side of Stimson. So, when you asked, and I think we talked about that already, why is it different on either side? Because we have, you know, a single-family R1 versus the R3. The other thing is, it seems to me that the kids even drive to go play frisbee, because that lot, a lot there is full.
Which one?
The recreational lots and the infamous NCR spot.
Well, at the end of Morris, you're saying, yeah.
Yeah, you know, just to kind of echo that thought, I think that the roundabout and that whole development will have an enormous impact on the use of automobiles on this area. And I think that nobody's really thought, I mean, I guess they thought about it because they acquired all the properties, but...
Yeah, but we don't know the actual effect once it opens up.
I know, you can think about it, but they may just go out to East State Street, right?
Mm-hmm. And I'm, well, I'm aware, it used to be the major turnoff was on to Elliott, and that was always a problem, because we've got pre-congested wire that was trying to turn off. Now, pretty much if you watch everybody going out of town on Mill Street, they go right down to the private newly paved private road, was it River Village?
I think we call it Mill Street Access Road.
Is that what they're calling it? Mill Street Access Road?
Well, which is causing problems for Mill Street Village.
Yes.
Predictable.
So...
I mean, that was...
And again, where...
The noise has picked up more there, obviously the traffic flow is greater.
And it's only just beginning, right?
And there's no real...
Is that railroad right away where they're made?
There's no way to slow the traffic down at this point, so, you know, people are flying through.
The university has yet to determine where they're going, if they want to punch out to Stimson, where it's going to be. I thought that they were, the discussion was at one point, the railway, right away.
Right, just shifted to...
It shifted to the west.
Thank you.
West, northwest.
Vionic, bionic.
Yes.
It's not that much distance, I would...
No, it isn't.
But just maybe enough to make a difference in the weight quality of life in Mill Village.
And it really would need that roundabout design in order to be safe and adequately access there. So, I didn't, at this first I'd heard that they're garnering some complaints related to the increased usage of that access roadways.
Yeah, that's already happening, so...
I imagine that most people on that side of the apartment complex did not have to listen to the 50 and 32 traffic, so now they're getting a little bit of noise on that side of the building. I mean, basically, if you lived in that building and you lived on one side, the east side, you'd be listening to Jake breaking, even though we don't...
Not within the city limits.
Oh, like we, how many have we cited in the past, since the institution of that?
The only Jake breaks I heard yesterday were the fire trucks.
Okay.
But I think, too, in terms of future development, if you're talking about that one section or any part of Stimson, I think that the sense is, you know, we like the smaller, locally-owned form rather than something that's a little bigger. I mean, obviously, a Walmart couldn't fit in there, but, you know, something bigger or as far as what the usage is, that type of thing, they would like to maintain a smaller footprint, you know, depending on the development that takes place there, so...
But that's it. You start saying, what about our, are the B3s? I mean, let's, if we were to take all the cars we've been looking at each time and say, okay, what are the ratios of chain stores and franchises versus local industry? And that, you know, and start plotting them out, which would probably be a big chore, but, you know, we have a certain amount of it on Richland, I would say, you know, whether it's CNE or some of the, even wall offices at that point. On the other hand, we have McDonald's on Richland, you know? These are the franchises, the Wendy's, the Taco John's. What do we have on Stimson? Very few, you're right. But, you know, you could see where that would build up over that, and you could end up with a bunch of franchises there. And it's, if you want that local color, you know?
Right.
And I don't know how you legislate that, really. I mean, you'd say, we want that feel, but you're locking it down on some level too, saying, okay, you can only build this size, it has to be this look. And, you know, we have some guidelines in the comprehensive plan on that, too, but, you know, it's evolved since then. Some good ideas, though.
Yeah. Nice report.
Definitely different from the others.
If you get a chance, send that electronically to Charlene.
Sure.
Okay.
Let's see, that concludes communications. Going to our report from the city planner, and Paul, would you like to go ahead?
Sure, I've got several things. The city's Environment and Sustainability Commission has been meeting, we've kind of ramped up our meetings. They're trying to put together a sustainability plan, so we're slowly kind of getting our outline together of what we think, what should be included in a sustainability plan, and then trying to organize probably a public open-house meeting to talk more about it and get a lot of public information and input as to what people think that means for Athens. We don't have any dates set yet. I'm expecting probably late September or into October.
Okay.
That commission also has a available seat. If you're aware of anybody who's interested in serving, they can contact me.
Okay.
The Historic Preservation Commission had a very good meeting on Tuesday evening in this room. Nathan Bevel, a, he is a community, community manager, I believe is his title, for Ohio History Connection, which used to be called the Ohio Historic Preservation Society. He gave a presentation about the certified local government process and about the need to protect historic resources in a community and the need to update all of our historic preservation information. One thing he pointed out is that we've done very little with historic preservation, even with getting buildings registered or anything, since the late 70s and the early 80s. Buildings can be considered for the National Register as a general rule if they're 50 years old or greater. And so, even with our Uptown Historic District, that was designated all the way back in 1981, so that's been 33 years worth of time, where there may have been buildings that were built in the 60s or in the 40s that were not eligible back in 1981 to be considered historic, maybe eligible now. So, I think the Preservation Commission's going to be working on doing some inventorying of a lot of these buildings and seeing if we think that they may have some merit for registration, either at the state or at the federal level. And then we had a good conversation, I thought, about how we would go about getting things locally listed as being historic for the city's purposes, if we think they have value to local history that may not be valuable to the state or at the federal level. So, it was a very good, very good workshop. Guys from the government channel did record it, and I believe that will be being put into the loop on Channel 5. It's about two hours long. I think Nancy and Paula, you both were able to attend, so thank you on that. RJ, if you'd like to see it. I thought it was a pretty good presentation. First 45 minutes would probably be relatively boring to you, since it's about how to organize a historic preservation commission and the Roberts Rules and things that you're already very familiar with, recording of minutes, et cetera. So, that was a very good workshop, I thought. The, with respect to the ridges advisory and the ridges master planning process, there will be a public participation meeting on Monday, August 18th, at 5:00 PM at Building 21 at the ridges. As I said, that is public, so if anybody is interested in attending, the representatives from Schooly Caldwell and Associates, I'm sure they'll be managing the meeting and trying to get public input as to what people think and potential uses for the building and talking about preservation, excuse me?
5 o'clock?
Yes, 5:00 PM, yeah.
I'm sorry, where's the location again?
Building 21 at the ridges. I believe that...
That's a Ilgard, isn't it?
I believe so.
22 is Voynovich.
Close to the theater.
That's what I'm thinking.
Close to that little...
I get confused as to which is which. I was thinking it was the one, the Voynovich building.
It is.
Closest to the roundabout, but...
No, I think it's the other side.
It's just Building 21.
Okay.
If we're not sure, Building 21, we'll get on Ohio.edu and double-check.
Yeah, Google it.
The Bicycle and Pedestrian Subcommittee of the Council Transportation Committee, we are having a meeting on August 22nd, that's a Friday at noon. We're going to be discussing primarily a visit that'll be coming the Thursday after that, I think that's August 28th, I believe, with a representative from the League of American Bicyclists, which has listed Athens in 2014 as one of the 100 communities in Ohio, in the US that they wanted to pay a visit to, to discuss their bicycling infrastructure and see what we've done with bicycling infrastructure, and then give a presentation to bicycle advocates, administrators, and elected officials about the possibility of applying to be listed as a bicycle-friendly community, which is an award that they designate to communities. There's only, there's only a few in the state of Ohio, I believe, that have received that designation. So, that'll be coming up, the August 22nd meeting, that's at noon, and that is open as well.
That's at the front office.
It'll be in the front conference room at City Hall on the first floor. And finally, I do have copies of the Essence of Athens Plan for Nancy and for RJ, I believe Mayor and Paula, you both already have copies. It is complete. There's also a, a press release was sent out on Tuesday. I know the messenger, I think it was, the messenger might be in this morning's paper. I haven't had a chance to see it yet. I'm very excited about this plan. I think it was, it looks fantastic. I think there's really great recommendations and ideas in here, and it'll get a lot of people really thinking about how they do design and how they do development in Athens, and really just trying to encourage people to take a little bit more thought into what they do and see if they can try to make something that is unique or special to Athens. So, we'll be doing, we'll be doing some sort of a meeting on this sometime in mid-September. We're trying to figure out dates right now.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Loeb? Thank you. Mr. Paskey?
No, I'm sorry. All I have to say or report is next Tuesday night, the Board of Zoning Appeals, at 7:00 PM, August 12th. We do have three cases next week. One of them's a 30 Utah place. It's a request to put a eight-foot-tall masonry fence around the property line, with the exception of the front yard, but coming out to the front setback. So, that's the residence known as the castle, the big house there on Utah. The second one is at 75 Stewart Street. This is for Christ the King Church, wishing to put an addition onto their, what do you call the back building, parsonage building or rectory or whatever the technical name of it is.
Solship building if we're Methodist, but I can't think of what you're...
Yeah. Anyways, they're wishing to put an addition on there. The building is about three and a half feet below the base blood elevation. It did require, or did obtain a variance back in, what year did we say?
91.
91 when it was built, but this is an alteration to the building, so they need to basically renew that variance or continue the variance for the addition they wish to put on. And then the third one is at 24 South Shafer Street. It's a residence that is doing some alterations to the height of the building.
It started already.
Yes, it started already, so they are coming in to ask for forgiveness. That's where he said it's at.
So, the church is to go through Title 25, is it?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to try to remember.
But that is a variance, they can go through the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yeah, that, Board of Zoning Appeals does analysis of that.
Correct.
In Columbus.
The next meeting, as of right now, I do not have anything on the agenda, but there's a lot of tentative possible Title 41s upcoming, but I don't foresee any of them within the next couple meetings, but there's a lot on the plate.
Or secret post office.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Paskey?
Not that he can see on camera, obviously.